Hello, everybody. It's 6:30. Calling the Ellisville Town Council to session for Monday, November 13th. Jimmy, got prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you so much, this little town. We thank you for all the many blessings. We sow it on the families and the organization represented here. Just be with us tonight. Be with us always. Yes, we sing in Jesus' name. Amen.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
All right. Under ordinance is first reading, we have ordinance number 2023-16, and it's being introduced for first reading, which is an ordinance of the town of Ellisville appropriating the proceeds of the general obligation bond of 2023. The public hearing on ordinance 2023-16 was properly noticed in the Bloomington Herald Times on November 3rd, 2023, and we have proof of publication. However, the town council will conduct the public hearing on ordinance 2023-16 at the November 27th, 2023 town council meeting, which will take place in the public meeting room here at the Ellisville Town Hall, 1150 West Guy McAllen Drive, Ellisville, Indiana, at 6:30 PM. I move to table the public hearing on ordinance 2023-16 to the next town council meeting on November 27th, 2023, at 6:30 PM.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pam Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, October 23rd, 2023?
So moved.
Second. William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pam Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, October 23rd, 2023?
So moved.
Second. William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pam Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable, vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second. William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pam Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Ordinance is on second reading. Public hearing for ordinance 2023-13 to amend section 52.134 of the Ellisville Town Code to revise the stormwater system user fee base rate. Is that you, Jeff? Who's got that?
I can do it.
Okay.
Yes. The staff, the street department and the utilities department has went over their budgets for the next few years. We have capital projects in all three utilities, including stormwater. The fee for stormwater has been at $4 for quite a few years, and it's not kept pace with increased costs for materials, labor, fuel. We probably have over $2 million with the stormwater projects listed for the next five to seven years at least. We don't think we can do them all just because of limitations on how much we can spend, but these increases will help our budget and provide us with some monies to be safe and prepare for, to pay for a capital project. One in particular would be a new street sweeper. Yeah, and they're costly. What do they cost?
That works $300,000, and the one we have now is 15 years old.
Yeah, so we're planning ahead, and this is part of the plan, is to make sure we have monies to take care of not only rolling stock, but also take care of some of the stormwater projects that are needed in mostly neighborhoods.
Okay. Counsel discussion on this? Seeing none, move to public comment on this item. All right. Back to counsel action.
Okay. I move to approve the ordinance 2023-13 to amend section 52.134 of Ellisville Town Code to revise the stormwater system user fee base rate.
I'll second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pam Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
To be clear, we raised it $2 next year and $1 the following year, and each dollar that we raise it raises about $50,000 in money that we can spend on the stormwater.
All right. Ordinance 2023-14 requiring developers to post a maintenance bond and construction routing plan for construction projects. Who has this one?
I'll start. This was before the town council a couple of meetings ago, and the purpose of this is to have developers post what is called a maintenance bond in order that the town may have funds to repair streets that might be damaged by contractors' equipment as they're driving back and forth on roads to finish work in their subdivisions. And as I recall, the town council members had some objections to my first draft because they were concerned that, one, the bond proposed was a $100,000 bond, which I think some council members thought was too costly, particularly for small developers, and it would have applied to everyone, no matter what size the business, that business would have had to post a $100,000 bond. There was also some issue with regard to what did the words adjoining streets mean. So what I came up with is some language which makes it clear that, first, this is only going to apply to developers who have equipment weighing 20,000 pounds or more, working on a project, and before they start the project, they have to provide a routing plan to the planning department and the street department, and that's the route they're going to be limited to when they work on the project. So those are the streets that the street department and the planning department will focus on when they determine what an appropriate bond should be. And so, in that sense, it's no different than what the town already does with regard to figuring out what the bond should be for improvements. It's going to be kind of a case-by-case basis. The planning department, the street department will have to customize or come up with a plan for, just as they come up with a plan for improvements, they'll have to come up with a plan for repairing the roads. So we've narrowed it down to equipment, 20,000 pounds or more. The developer will provide a plan showing what roads he or she is going to be working on, so that further narrows it down, and then the street department and the planning department together will determine what the bond is. And then, once the project is completed, if it's determined that there's no damage to the roads, then the bond will be released.
Anybody else?
I have one question, and it's just me, but in F/A?
Yes.
It says pre-existing subdivisions?
Mm-hmm.
And that one kind of confused me because, to me, it should be new and pre-existing subdivisions, because there's a lot of subdivisions that are brand-new that would need this, unless I'm interpreting it incorrectly, but...
Well, the intent is for any subdivision, it's to apply to any subdivision that's already had approval by the planning department.
Okay.
Whether it's new or 20 years old, and, I mean, feasibly, it could be a subdivision that, as has happened from time to time, the developer starts work, the developer runs out of money, it sits there for four, five, or six years, and then somebody else comes in and takes over. So it's any subdivision that's already been approved and is in existence, whether it's a year old or brand-new or five years old.
Did you want to leave that out?
Yeah, if I want to make sure any other supervisor comments. All right, counsel then. So how much are we, how are we calculating how much we're going to require them to deposit or to hold on surety?
Well, I don't know any good examples I can come up with off, right offhand, but, you know, if it's a certain, I mean, so many hundred feet of a section of road, or just that area, the entrance to the subdivision right there, based the cost on the, you know, the aggregate material, the labor, what it would be to fix that one specific area right there is basically what we'd do. So if you've only got, like, one way in and a one-way out, or vice versa, it's two streets, that would be based on them two streets to get into that particular area. And it wouldn't be like, like a road in there, just a perimeter. What's touching the worksite area? So it wouldn't be the road coming all the way through town, or it's just a perimeter road of the subjected area.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, how are we basing what we're requiring them to post?
Well, there's a formula they use when they do the community crossing is...
That's what I would probably use. I mean, what it would take...
Again, that's fine. That's the answer. And after, we have a formula that's the same for everybody.
Yes.
Right. Oh, yeah. It'd be what the tonnage would be per, or what the cost per ton would be to replace or to fix, repair that section of road, that area. That's what it'd be based off of.
Yes, it is per square foot, or square yard.
Okay. And second question, and I actually have a couple, so if any of the council members have other things. Under B1, financial guarantees shall be required for construction of one or two-bedroom, or two-family dwelling units and related accessory structures or improvements.
That's the current, that's not new language. That's the current version.
Right. That's why we're in this, though. If we're going to fix it, now's the time. Do we want to add other residential structures, apartment complexes, or anything like that? Because as I read this now, they would be immune from this. Correct? Or am I reading that wrong?
Um, I might wait on that, but that's a comment I would submit to Sean Dade, who's heading up our Unified Development Ordinance meetings, that that's a concern that you have, so that can be fixed in the UDO. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, while we have this ordinance open, if we're going to monkey with it. And then, I guess my next question, just for clarity, this will only, I think this is Darla, this will only apply to town roads, correct? Or is it anything within the town?
It's going to be anything that the town's going to be required to fix.
Which would not be 46.
So if it's State Road 46, it's not going to be State Road 46. If it's a private road in a subdivision that's maintained by an HOA, the contractor's going to have to fix his own roads.
Okay.
So, yes, it's anything that the town's going to have to fix.
And to be clear, this is just new construction, not, because B1 also says in related accessory structures or improvements, so somebody's putting up a shed or something like that, or we're not going to be...
No, and that's the reason for the weight limit.
Okay.
Because as Scott pointed out at the meeting, you know, what if you have a couple of guys in a pickup truck who are making repairs or doing the punch lists or something? No, it doesn't apply to them, but it only applies to if you're doing a project where you have vehicles that weigh 20,000 pounds or more.
Okay.
And one of the things we're talking about with regard to the UDO is having one section under the code that talks about all the bonds, because right now, they're at least in two different sections of the code. So hopefully, I mean, this may be further refined later, and you'll see it, of course, and you'll have to pass it, but one of the things I've asked Mr. Dade to think about is just having one particular bond ordinance or security ordinance that lists all the things that can be used as acceptable forms of security, and then the other sections in the code will just simply refer back to that bond section, if that makes any sense, because right now, you've got two sections.
Darla, would it be wise for us to memorialize in the ordinance how we're calculating what they're going to be charged for the surety? I mean, I, don't get me wrong, Kip, I have no doubt that the formula, but what if that changes? Five, 10 years from now, nobody addresses this?
Um, okay, so under F1... So how about if we add a sentence at the end of F1 that says, "Said bond shall be calculated according to..." What were the documents that you, Kip, and Denise look at if you're making a grant application?
Current pricing, what is?
Current street estimates is what I call it in my...
Can I make an easier suggestion?
Sure.
If Kip will just promulgate, or whoever follows him in this role, promulgate a scale or a formula every year, whatever the one you post in January, that's what they're all looking with for the year. That way, we're not tied to a mid-year correction to whatever you've got, and this way, you can, hey, my labor costs are more than what they're allowing here, or whatever. Is that doable, or is that too complicated?
Is that something we ought to come back to every year, then?
As I envision, you just have to post it for everybody every year. We have to make it known that this is what this costs.
But what if the price for equipment and the materials change during the year? Are you stuck with the lower amount because...
No, because you would just, I don't know how it works now, but, you know, whatever the market cost of this, times this, times this, times this.
Well, I mean, it's always a gamble because of, in the street department's line of work, it's got to do with material, and everybody knows how the price of oil goes up and down, and that's what regulates what the cost is for the asphalt, so...
We can just use market price, times whatever, times whatever.
Right.
So, if Rogers, that's her, you know, E&amp;B?
E&amp;B and...
Yeah, if they send out a June correction like they do sometimes, or whatever.
I usually, I usually request for stuff like that in January, so...
Do you apply for a grant in January?
Because I apply for the grants in January, so I do project and budgetary quote prices.
But we can mark that price as current market price and not actually have a number.
I'm good with that. I'm just trying to avoid this sitting in the file for five, 10 years and not getting touched, and all of a sudden, that formula's way out of date.
Right. Okay, how about this? "The amount of the bond shall be calculated according to current market estimates for material and labor."
I'm good with that.
Yeah?
And that will be the last sentence in paragraph F1.
Is there anything else you want to, materials, labor, fuel? I mean, do we have to add anything?
Materials and labor would cover it all.
Okay. All right.
Can't any more counsel discussion on this? Public comment? Seeing none, back to counsel action.
I would move approval of ordinance 2023-14, requiring developers to post a maintenance bond and construction routing plan for construction projects as amended.
Second.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now, this one I'm excited about tonight, flood report. Mike, you got something to report on that?
We had our final inspection last Friday afternoon. We had Rick there, Andrew Miller from Christopher Burke to do the walkthrough with the Crider Supervisor, and we're done. I mean, it's finished to satisfaction. We do have some tree mitigation, where we've taken trees down. We had to plant some trees in another area along the creek. We picked east of the Hart Street Bridge, and we've got a plan for tree mitigation. We have to put in about 200 trees and 50 bushes, or something like that. And so, it's a DNR-approved mitigation, and so anybody that's got the Boy Scouts phone number can call me. They're always looking for a project, and this would be a perfect one, where they'd be working hand-in-hand with us to do the mitigation. The trees are not 10-foot trees, they're saplings, and so we have a list of trees that are approved, and so, anyway, that's the only thing we have left to do in the spring. So other than that, I'd point out that we've not had a flood since we started the project, so it must really be working. I hope nobody notices it hadn't rained yet, but, anyway...
It's been like five hours, so thanks.
Yeah, yeah. But, but we moved 16,000 cubic yards of dirt out of the flood plain.
And debris.
And debris, yeah. A few things of debris. And so, when you go, if you go down and look at it, a lot of people have stated they expected to see a hole, you know, instead of a nice gradual slope to the creek bed, to the invert of the creek. And so, it's, it's an optical illusion that says that much dirt didn't come out of there, but indeed, it does. If you go down to the creek and then look back, it kind of puts it in perspective. I'm not saying you should walk down there, but you can. And so, anyway, we're pretty proud that it came in on budget, on time, and if anybody wants to see me the first night of a big rain, I'll probably be down on Vine Street. It's all good news.
All right. Any counsel comments first on this?
It's just phenomenal work over the years. I know you've really kept at this and at this, but...
Yeah, Criders did a really good job on it, and they had the right people and the rag mount equipment, and so they were good partners in this project. It will green up. If you look down on the north end, or west end, depending on how you're standing in Ellisville, it's already started greening up down there. So the blankets that are along Vine Street between Second and where the Village Inn outlets, that all will green up too. And then there are shoots of willow trees that are along the creek bank, and they will grow, and so it should look really nice once they grow, and their shoots are in tubes that are in the rip ramp. So it'll look all different in a year or two, and so, pretty excited about it. I think the aesthetics will be as good as the flood mitigation.
Awesome. Right. Any public comment on this?
If you really want scouts, my Dr. Dwar is the one to do, and he'll get your service projects.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you very much. Envision Ellisville update, Dan? Or no, it's Kyle List. All right, Kyle.
I'll do it.
All right. Unless you want to go by the name Dan today.
Not really.
Okay. Just remember that, Dan.
You know, they're worse people to be. I wouldn't mind being Dan Rarries sometimes.
That's true.
Maybe when I grow up. Anyway, I'm Kyle Hannah with the Envision Ellisville Project, and I want to give you a report. I think we told you earlier that we went from the three task forces down to one task force, and that's been meeting as such since September. And they've been pretty effective meetings, I think. Good, good folks, good discussion. We, so in September, the plan was, okay, let's identify parts of the town that, what's the character of these parts? Which are the vibrant parts, which, you know, where there'll be a lot of activity, which are less vibrant, like neighborhoods and things? So we just kind of had an agreement about what, you know, looking over the map, like, okay, what are the vibrant parts, what are the less vibrant parts? You know, what is the character of all these places throughout the community? Then, at our last meeting in October, we started thinking, what are the visual aspects? What goes with this? By visual aspects, and this would be more in the public gathering places. What do you want it to look like? What do your benches look like? What do your lights look like? What do your trashcans look like? Your bike racks? So we kind of discussed those and looked at, you know, different examples of what things were like, and like, what's the thought? We had the opportunity to vote on the things we liked best for the public gathering spaces. You won't be surprised that the tendency was toward limestone, not brick. And then, some of the other designs, they were thinking more classic things, like, you know, we want them to look good, but we don't want them to be bell bottoms that are out of style here. Sometime, they have to wait 30 years for them to come back. Have they come back yet?
No, and the orange and purple ones I chose, I don't think they got any more votes than me, did they?
Darn it. So anyway, but it is, but speaking of you and your votes, one of the things we thought, you know, we're getting close to coming up with this, you know, the design, the guidelines, sort of, for the public space guidelines. Thought, you know, I know Councilman Ellis has been pushing the Strong Towns book on all of you, and I know you've been reading it, word for word, but what you have, and based on that and other things, you've just been noticing elements you like in the town, and you might have noticed elements in other towns. Take a picture of it and share it with us. And I'm going to send you probably tonight, I was hoping to bring handouts tonight, but I couldn't get it, technical difficulties and all, but I'm going to send you a link tonight that if you, so if you've got some ideas, if you run across some really cool things, you know, take a picture and upload it, so we can look and say, oh, okay, I see that, that is a good idea. And then, you know, something Envision Ellisville has done from the beginning is try to bring the public in. So I'm going to post that link on the Facebook page also, to give other people a chance to do that, to say, have you seen something really neat that you think would be needed for Ellisville? So an opportunity to say, this is, we think this would look really good in our town. So you get, you get a chance to have input on that, and the public will as well. The deadline for that is November 27th will be, but we're hoping to get just some good feedback. The task forces have been great, a lot of good discussion, a lot of good discussion while we're voting and things, and we thought we really have good, good input, but, you know, let's open it up and get some more input, make things even better. So that's where we are, and then, by the first of the year, we should have the design guidelines for what our public spaces should look like, and as long as everyone gets to work in by November 27th.
Next council meeting, everybody.
Any questions?
I just appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, thanks. I'm excited about it. It's really going well.
You should be. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Jimmy, I think this, it is your turn. Do you want me to give you the narration, what it is?
This is real exciting. If you haven't watched Andy Griffith, you'll know some of the early, some of the early episodes. Barney would come to Sheriff Taylor and say, there's only one word for this. This is big. Man, this is big. We really feel like this. Sam, come here. I want to introduce you to Sam Miller. He's a 2017 graduate of Edgewood High School. He and his lovely bride were just married a couple weeks ago, right?
Congrats.
And she's an Edgewood graduate. They live right here close, and it's going to be a wonderful addition. We interviewed several people. I'm going to let Alec and Jerry Sanders talk a little bit about that. Jerry, go ahead if you want to say something about that.
Sure. We did interview several candidates for the third SRO, and Sam was very clear from the very beginning of his interview to the end, that he was the right guy for Edgewood Schools. He's going to fit right in with our current SROs, Alec and Jason. They're going to be a great team, and I don't know if this is a compliment or not, but Sam's going to fit right in with junior high students. We're really, you know, in the last five years, we've gone from one SRO to cover the entire campus to two SROs, with Jason having to cover the high school and the junior high, and now, we took a major step to make our schools even more safe by being able to have Jason at the high school, Sam at the junior high, and Alec covering the elementary campus. So I just want to thank the town council, and Jimmy, and also Police Department for bringing us a Sam Miller.
Alec, give us a little background on Sam.
I know Sam as an Edgewood grad. He went to the IU Police Academy with Jason as well. Young buck. That's really...
You recurred.
It's two and a half years at sheriff's office. Would that be accurate? So, but I just wanted to say thanks for supporting the SRO program. When I took this job four years ago, I didn't know what to expect. I had people telling me, are you really sure you want to be in the school all day long? And isn't that going to be pretty boring? But it's anything but boring. So this is a huge addition, and I'm very excited to bring Sam on.
Thank you. Sam, we'd like you to come up and, clerk treasurer Sandy, and...
Come up with your hand. Watch your step.
If you don't mind coming up here to me, that'd be great. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Samuel Miller.
I, Samuel Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Town Code of Ellisville.
And the Town Code of Ellisville.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Discharge and perform my duties as deputy marshal.
Discharge and perform my duties as deputy marshal.
Of the Ellisville Police Department.
Of the Ellisville Police Department.
Ellisville, Indiana.
Ellisville, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sam, having carried a bat for fifty-plus years, I'm sure this last weekend he felt kind of unclothed, and he was no bat. So here's your bat.
Thanks very much.
We're so glad to have you.
Hey, congratulations.
Here's his copy of the...
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go down the line. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want to say something? Go ahead.
Okay, I'd just like to say, Sam, when I see you up at the school and I'm with my grandkids, I hope you wave at me like Alec does, because they can't believe I know him. So if I know both of you guys, they think it's, you guys are the most famous guys in town, so please wave at me.
All right. Next on the agenda, changes to rural transportation.
There's two parts to Jimmy's.
Oh, there's two parts to Jimmy's. Oh, I thought that was all one thing. I'm sorry, Jimmy, go ahead.
We have a council consideration. I talked to Darla a couple times over the weekend, I guess, last weekend, but we've got a candidate for a part-time position. He's very eager to work, but he appears too certified. So I called Darla, we're getting indications now with LAA that that is possible to do this. I'll let Darla take it from there.
So what I have provided you is, are three pages from an eleven-page statute that discusses training for police officers. And the relevant portions are at the bottom of page two. The board shall adopt rules establishing a town marshal and conservancy marshal basic training program, subject to the following. And then on the next page, it says, law enforcement officers successfully completing the requirements of the program are eligible for appointment only in towns, employing the town marshal system or a conservancy district that employs a conservancy district marshal, and having not more than one marshal and six deputies. The next sentence says, the limitation imposed by subdivision three does not apply to an officer who has successfully completed the mandated basic training program. So of course, there are no cases that discuss this particular issue because that would make it too easy. So the question is, can the town, under its marshal system, hire a tier-two officer? And you can read that statute a couple of different ways. You can read it to mean that if you have a town that has more than seven officers, one marshal and six deputies, you can hire a tier-two officer, period. The other way to read it is that if you have, you can have six tier-two officers, but only six tier-two officers. And so I told Jimmy that I didn't have a problem with it, but I thought the town council should weigh in. And in particular, I thought Scott and Trevor may have some comment about how to interpret this. Because of course, if there's an issue down the road with the officers' training and the town gets sued, that could be an issue. So.
Before they jump in, can I ask, what is a tier-two? What, I'm not familiar with that.
Well...
It's a different number of weeks of training.
Okay.
So you get basically the same training, but they don't get quite as lengthy a training.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess I have a question on this irrespective of this particular thing. And this is something we were going to have a discussion about, but it got pushed to the back burner. At what point, and this is both for Darla and Jimmy, at what point do we come away from the town marshal system? They're all in the seventy-seven fund, those that are applicable at this point. They're all completing tier-one academy at this point. Would we not, in the long run, to make sure that we don't have this back and forth that we've had over the years, transition them completely into a police department as opposed to a town marshal service?
I think that's, that's something the council could certainly look into.
Because as I read the statute, you would still be able to use the tier-two as a part-time officer if we put that within the rules. They would just not be a full-time officer under that. And just for explanation to the public, the marshals, and this is not to denigrate them, this is just the way the state system is set up, do not have to attend the tier-one academy that the municipal officers have to attend. It's set up for very small towns with one or two people. They can't manage to have their officers away for sixteen-plus weeks. Now you have, at least in Ellisville, a fully professionalized department that has the ability to send people, and has been doing it for several decades now, sending them to the municipal academy, the tier-one academy. I just think it makes sense. And again, Jimmy, this is your department. I mean, if it doesn't to you, that's, that's something we need to talk about. Why would we continue with the marshal system, even in name? Because over the years, we've been back and forth and calling Ellisville Police. We've got documents that say Ellisville Police. I question, because there was a court ruling years ago that once they were referred to as police, they're police. You can't go back to marshal. But you can go from marshal to police.
For my time, I'm not sure what reason.
But that court decision, I'm sure, is long, out of date. But that was a concern when I first came on the council, because here we had documents saying, police department, police department, police department. But yet, we wanted to hide under the marshal's moniker, and that just didn't set well. But at what point do we just go away from that legacy of referring to the town marshal? Because again, yourself, the deputy chief, we're all hired as police chief, deputy police chief, not as town marshal, deputy town marshal. You know, and again, if we're already doing the tier-one academy for all the full-time officers, and tier-two is allowed underneath, why don't we just push through this barrier and be done with it once and for all? So this doesn't still hang out there.
So can we still use him, this candidate, as a part-time?
As I read the statute, yes.
I'm fine with that, yes.
And it's my understanding, we have no tier-two officers now, right? So he would be the only one.
Because once he's tier-two, it sounds, the candidate is not able, I take it, to step up to tier-one?
Not right now, no.
Okay.
But we know he's a good candidate. We've done a lot of background check on him. We know he's a good candidate.
Darla, what kind of legwork is that, taking this from a town marshal service to a, to a police department?
I could find out for you.
I'd like to find out, I think.
Again, not so much for today, but in perpetuity. And quite frankly, for hiring and retention. It is difficult, very difficult for police departments to hire right now. It is doubly difficult for marshal services that require tier-one academy to hire. So if we're going to, if we're going to forgive the phrasing, if we're going to play in that world, let's just be in that world. Let's not straddle the fence. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's me.
We really can't do anything with him until after the first year anyway, until the budget clears and...
Right.
So we'll play on using him then?
It's up to the board.
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, if he fits, he fits. Tier-two, it sounds like, by the procedure and standard here, he's good to go, in my opinion. But I'll let these other guys speak to him.
I look back, and it took me a while to adjust to this. We have reserve officers with forty-hour basic training that we, that certain officers will be, are allowed to patrol, make arrests. And, you know, so I think a tier-two would fit right in on that, so.
Darla, does this need a vote, or just kind of a consensus? Or what do we?
I would say if, well, how do you want to handle it, Jimmy? Do you want to just have the town council decide at their first meeting in January, or vote to accept the candidate now? Or what do you want to do?
Well, according to our new bylaw.
That's right. You could hire him because he's a reserve.
I'd hire a part-time.
Right.
Council approval, so. But I would like to have a consensus that you approve on doing this. But I don't know that we'll extend this out anymore, but at least we know this young man wants to work, so he wants to be a police officer.
I have no objections.
I'm good.
Go ahead.
And it's also possible to, this, the section that I just read to you was, is the new section of this particular code as of July of this year. And I think maybe the legislature will go back and tinker with this, because there are some people who are interested in having more tier-two deputies serve. So this may look different next year even, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. By the way, the car looks very nice.
Well, thank you.
The school resource car is what I'm referring to. It's a specialty vehicle, so it's not a normal patrol vehicle, so it's got different markings on it. It's clearly identifiable as a police vehicle, but it looks, looks sharp.
We're very proud. Alex, stand up. Alex is the time girl.
It took a lot of persuading, but...
He's armed. I would do that.
He's been all summer long. If you miss me, that's the thing to do, so. Yeah, we're proud of it. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, now we're on the changes to rural transportation. Pam, is this you? Because you're the only one out of the council that's been at those meetings.
Okay. I went, Dan and I went to a meeting for the transit, and as of January the first, we need to start paying for transit. Ellisville does, because Bloomington's no longer going to do it. So we got to decide if we're going to pay for it or not, because as of January first, it expires. And this Thursday, you're going to come to the meeting, right? Are you coming to the meeting Thursday?
I haven't been invited, Dan. I know.
Okay, awesome you. She'll be there. Of course, the rural transit will have the second meeting.
Council member Angie Purdy.
And the mayor, he was there the last time.
Jeff Cockrell, I think.
Well, I have a question.
Couldn't handle this to me.
Why doesn't Area Ten have to meet?
I have no idea.
Well, they've provided the service up till now, if I remember right. And tried to get a message out to, I think it's Chris Myers, and it just failed to get to her. And I was hoping she'd be here to speak. But if we're going to go to a meeting Thursday, then I wouldn't mind having a meeting prior to that with internal staff.
I guess my question is, how did we get here?
Why? It's just, that's a good question.
Where was the funding coming from initially? How did it get cut? Why is it now either cut or redirected?
Because from my understanding, and they'll explain it better, because we had asked for more amounts and stuff.
Sure.
Bloomington was paying for it, and then as expenses come up, you know, gas and everything, when they went to apply to get more money, they were basically turned down because we're separate. Like, they couldn't get, they couldn't, like, try to get more money to take care of Ellisville.
My understanding...
Like Ellisville's a separate...
My understanding was that, not that Bloomington was paying for rural transit, but rural transit had some federal grants that is supposed to go from rural to rural only. And Ellisville's now not designated as rural. So if they pick up or drop off at Ellisville, or the greater Bloomington area, like in the county, like Walmart, it's no longer considered rural. Those, those trips would not be reimbursable. But if you're going from like Owen County to Owen County, it would be. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, because the mayor was there. And he had said that basically the taxpayers of Bloomington were paying for our, for Ellisville to use it.
They, that, not to this point, they have not been.
No.
I don't think that's necessarily correct, but it could be.
I think there was a federal grant.
There is.
Area Ten received some of it, and they've been notified they cannot provide that service anymore. But I'd be interested in the details and the percentage and the ridership and what monies come from the feds that subsidize even what Bloomington does.
Right.
Before, I would be interested in talking about committing any money. I'd also point out that we've already did our budget for twenty-twenty-four, and to commit long-term to anything without knowing the facts and having it in the budget, just, just doesn't seem like...
We were talking almost $200,000, are we not?
Right, $174,000. And what, when I'm looking at the numbers that they gave, just in the email that Dan forwarded me, I've had no communication from anybody. They showed eight thousand riders. Well, I don't believe we have eight thousand trips from rural transit. But when you couple that with the city of Bloomington authorizing bus service to the entire county, what they're planning to do is add bus routes. So basically, what we would be doing is having a public transportation system for everybody in Ellisville, and we'd be paying our portion. That's what I think they're trying to do. Because it makes it easier for them to offload their housing problems. Hey, just build out here. We have problems, just send them out here. I, I think there's more to it than what we're, that eight thousand number sticks out. It really does. I do not think, and the fact that Area Ten's not in the conversation, I, I don't have warm fuzzies that this is being done in good faith with these numbers.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty sure.
I'll publicly say it.
I'm pretty sure Chris Meyer, who runs Area Ten locally, is a wealth of information.
Right. This isn't Area Ten.
And even if they're not going to be part of the future conversation, the past institutional knowledge might be worth us knowing before we go into any negotiations or any even consideration of...
Because I'm completely against Bloomington extending bus routes out to Ellisville. And I'll, I'll stake that position now.
And Mike, do you, do you want me to have her send you the link? Because it'd be online. The meeting's going to be online.
Well, that's no way to talk negotiations. I mean.
That's what we did last...
I guess if it's just informational, I'd be glad to. But if we get down to the brass tacks and, and they really want us to be part of any kind of arrangement, we need to have some in-person conversations.
Because another, another thing to ask, not from them, but Mike, when you talk to rural transit, if you could, ask them if we could just contract with rural transit? If they're not getting federal grants and they can get town money, how much would that cost?
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure rural transit in the future is prohibited, because they do get federal money to, to transit municipality to municipality. I think that was the whole problem.
Even if the municipality's paying them?
Well, I don't know if it...
Yeah, I mean, I know they couldn't use the grant money.
Yeah, I don't know if it spoils their grant money or not, but there's a lot, there's a lot to it. And that's why we probably need, if the meeting's informational, great. We should be in on it. I'd like Darla to be in on it.
Me and Dan's going to be there. The invite desk, we'll be there. She's going to be there. And then I thought they were going to send you an invite, but...
Okay, that's fine.
I'll tell her to send you the link.
Do you know when it is Thursday?
It's Thursday at 5:30, Natalie.
Five thirty, at night?
Last time we had it in the daytime, so I don't know why they...
I'd rather do five thirty in the morning.
About, about a month ago, Mike asked my office to field complaints. He had given rural transit our phone number, my office's phone number, and he asked me to track that. And in that length of time, we've gotten three complaints, two citizens and then one for Stone Belt, because I guess there are people with special needs that need transportation to and from work. So in that length of time, I have only gotten three, or I've gotten three, I shouldn't say only.
But are, they're still running now currently though, right?
Currently, they are.
So what are the complaints about?
Well, Stone Belt was real concerned for their, their people.
Cutting off at the beginning, okay.
Cutting off on January one, and she felt, felt like it hadn't, there hadn't been much conversation on it, and what was...
She's right.
What was Ellisville going to do?
Well, again, if I can add, sorry, Dan, it seems to me pretty unfair to, hey, just cut it off. Because there's a lot of people who depend on this, particularly going to doctor's appointments, things like that.
Right.
But also, it seems very disingenuous to me to all of a sudden turn to the town and go, here it is, catch. That, that doesn't set well. And we can talk about how we didn't get grants or whatever else. This didn't happen thirty days ago. There had to be a plan at some point from someone that we should have been included in these discussions, because I just honestly know in the budget, don't see that we have the money to do it.
Not the, not the dollar amount they're asking?
Well, and let's be honest, and I don't know about... Well, and let's be honest, and I don't know about Bloomington specifically, but I know other places, it is a, it is a wholly owned municipal corporation, sort of like sewer and water are, it is not part of the general fund money.
No, they're their own entity.
Right.
But here, we're being asked to take it as the town's entity.
And we have no say-so.
Right.
Over any of the running.
This is kind of like animal control, here's your bill.
And you know, when we did the animal control, I feel like they're asking us to be taxed twice, because we all pay county tax too, and the county's going, going to be taxed for some of this portion ridership, and then Ellisville will be taxed, so it seems like we're going to have to pay twice. Now, that would apply too to people in the city of Bloomington, so, but David Drake has talked to me several times, and I don't know the code that recites it, but if we do not provide a service, and that service is provided by the county, then we get to be included in that service.
But I don't know that the county provides it right now, if it was being funded off federal grants.
No, the city of Bloom, it's, the city of Bloomington doesn't provide it, but like I said, they're, they want to expand their bus routes.
And I have no issue, unlike you, I have no issue with that, as long as it doesn't come with a bill to the, to the town.
Oh, it absolutely would.
Well, I know, but if you want to, if you are making the decision to extend your bus route, that's fine, because you are taking in user fees and everything else. I'm, I'm good with that, but don't, in the end run, you know, in the, in the long run, say, here's the bill for us doing what we're going to do anyway.
I guess my concern is what they're saying, oh, we're doing this because rural transit's not do, not taking care of you, but what they're proposing is not to replace rural transit, it's to add public transportation for everybody, which is something we don't offer right now, because we can't afford to offer it right now. So it's kind of like a bait and switch, it's like, this over here, we, this is a problem, we're going to solve it by creating more. Hey, how about just factor in on the people that are, just need the rural transit aspect?
Well, with that line of thinking, what's to keep someone from building a light rail system and saying, here's your bill for the light rail we're building?
Exactly.
I mean, again, I, I wish we could afford it. I wish we could afford to do light rail, but these conversations should have been had years ago.
Correct.
In the run-up to this, not after the budget's already been passed.
Well, I, I, to be fair, I think the rules changed, and I don't know if it was an audit from the feds or.
Well, I get that, I, I do.
I mean, they.
But when they knew we should have known.
And I'm not trying to put the blame back on the city, or the county, or anybody, I'm just trying to explain that here we are.
No, I get it, I'm like.
Left with.
Here, catch is a perfect way to phrase it.
Dan?
I'm on the Area 10 board.
Uh huh.
And the way this was presented, Chris didn't even know about this meeting that was, that they had to discuss this until like two hours ahead of time, and she found out from somebody else, she wasn't brought into the conversation. This is about, you know, follow the money, this is about power and money.
That just tells me it's not about the Area 10 situation and rural transit.
And Area 10, if they're not, if they are excluded from getting the money that they've gotten to do this, and that money goes to Bloomington, then, and the way I understand it, and it's a very complicated situation, and you definitely need to talk to Chris Myers about it, that it's not only will rural transit not have the money to do it, they won't be allowed to do it, because they, if, once the Bloomington takes over this area.
Right.
Which, they've always had the ability to do that, they just haven't done it. I mean, they've had the authority to do it, but they haven't done it, and they're not going to provide the kind of service that, I mean, they'll have routes.
Right, it'll just be bus service.
They're not going to provide the service that rural transit provides to go pick you up and take you.
Bingo.
And bring you back, it's not going to be like that, it's going to be, you know, a route.
Pickups at this time?
And how, how am I going to get down to the bus stop?
Not their problem.
And so I think you really need to talk to Chris, because this is a, this is going to impact a lot of your seniors.
Yes.
That, that do not have transportation, that can't drive, that can't afford to drive, and they've depended on this for years.
I mean, it would almost.
And once this is cut off.
With the amount they're asking, it'd be less expensive for us to hire someone and fit our own van.
Well.
I don't know about that.
If Uber, if an Uber takes you for 40 bucks, I don't know what an Uber costs these days, but you could do 4,350.
The problem would be, though, they would have to have wheelchair accessible vehicles, they would have to be able to help.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
That's why I'd say if the town had someone.
So, Dan, maybe you can answer this, or somebody else. Was the funding cut, the funding source, was it cut to Area 10 by the federal government, or was it diverted to another entity?
Diverted to Bloomington Transit.
Why?
The, the whole thing, and I'm not an expert on it by any means, the whole thing revolves around a definition of rural.
Right.
And, and a definition of what their, what Bloomington's urban area is.
Right.
And, and they've expanded, or maybe it's always been that way, they just haven't capitalized on it, but it includes Ellisville. They're coming over the, they're allowed to come over this way, and they just never have done it, and now they're going to do it, but they're not going to do it like rural transit does it.
So, Darla, that would be my question, under, and forgive me for not having the term directly off the top of my head.
Home rule.
Home rule, thank you. How is that possible?
Well, I don't know that I can answer that question right now, Scott.
Okay.
You mean, your question is, can Bloomington force Ellisville to take their bus routes?
Yes.
If Ellisville doesn't want to? That's a good question.
Well, the more important question is, can they force us to pay?
Right.
Well, I don't know that they're forcing us to pay, they're just saying if you don't pay, you don't get the buses.
And my question is, as a representative of, of Area 10, it isn't about who pays, it's about those people.
Right.
Right.
And who's going to serve them, and if you have a bus stop, if the, if Bloomington's going to send a bus over here, and the bus stop's going to be on Sale Street in front of the Caffeinated Cook, and you can't get down there, then what good does it do you?
And that's my concern, it's, this is a solution not to the problem, this is a solution we're not asking for.
Right.
This is a public transportation solution, not one for rural, a solution for rural transit.
But you definitely need to get with Chris Myers, because she knows everything about it, forward and backward.
Yes, she explained it to me, but it is very complex, and I would hesitate to even try to repeat what she said, I mean, it's about, it's about proportionate money from the feds and, and who's allowed to use them, and, and, and there's a new ruling, or, or there was a new decision made that rural cannot do what they're doing now, because it was municipality to municipality, when they picked people up here and took them into Bloomington, for whatever reasons, and so I don't know that it was a power play at all, I just think the, the feds got involved and screwed it all up.
Yeah, and I don't think it was a power play, I'm just trying to figure out where the money went and why.
Yeah.
Right.
You said there's 8,000 rides?
That, that's, that's what they're, that's what they're building us for.
Is that from the town, is that from the town, or the town, the Richmond Township?
It's true, one, one, one way is a ride.
Well, I just don't know, I mean, it's just concerned also being the township as well as the town?
No, they're just talking, because the county will pay a portion.
Okay.
Of theirs, and that's what's, there's, there's no way rural transit's, that's what clued me in, this wasn't a solution to the rural transit situation, they just want to add bus service, and they're using the rural transit situation as a way to say, hey, we can solve two birds with one stone, but I don't think they quite understand what rural transit does. I mean, they may, they, it may in good faith think this will solve the rural transit area, adding bus routes.
I, I think they do understand what rural transit does, I just think that they're going to take a different route, if you'll pardon the pun.
Well.
At the very least, they should show up and explain their plan before they pay a nickel.
What was telling to me is that, that Chris was pretty well cut out of conversation.
I agree.
That tells, that tells me all I need to know.
I fully agree with you, Dan.
Valerie?
Our office has frequently called for patients with rural transit, and in October, when I called for one, they, rural transit dispatcher, for lack of a better term, informed me that I would not be able to do that, probably after the first of the year, because it was being discontinued, and when I questioned her, she said, rural transit is ending, we're incorporated by Bloomington Transit, and they will be doing scheduled bus routes. And I said, okay, what about customized, you know, call and have to pay, that will not exist, we will find one, maybe two, bus stops in Ellisville, and probably two route, two runs in a day to begin with.
And who was it that said this?
She could be wrong, but on the other hand, she said, we have to, we're beginning to inform doctor's offices, as they call us, so I assume she at least knew something.
Who was this that told you? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the dispatcher or whomever I called to get the ride for one of our patients, because we called in for patient rides.
Yeah, I didn't need a name, I just, yeah, so that's, that's fine.
Well, we'll have a meeting at 5:30 PM, and we'll, we'll bring it back to you, and I'll probably have Area 10 invited to the next meeting, and in, in the future, for anybody out there, if you want to deal with Ellisville, we appreciate you acknowledging us first, and then maybe come to our meeting and explain themselves.
Yes, I agree. Because Pam, they haven't even given you, like you or Dan packets to share with us or anything, have they? Other than what was.
No. Me and Dan just got an email from the lady, and she said the commissioner wanted me and Dan to come to a meeting, that's all we were told, we went to the meeting, that's when they talked, and it was an informant that says the first, if things aren't settled, that as of 1st of January, we wouldn't have rides over here for people. That's first I heard of it.
I think from their standpoint, it's not a negotiation or discussion, it's.
See, we done it, we done it, William, online, so they never, like, sent out a packet or
Right.
give us, so this meeting's supposed to hopefully be more informative.
Yeah, well, I'm just going to give them the benefit of the doubt that they forgot Ellisville was in Monroe County, and we'll get with them and see what they have to say.
Yeah, some of those same people on the CIB asked them if they can remember that for the food and beverage tax too. Use that money.
Because when they asked me and Dan to come, Dan's the one in fact that told him he wanted you and Darla to come with, to come with us to the meeting.
Well.
Because we thought you guys ought to be there.
I guess word's not out that I'm town manager yet, it's only been four years, so.
It's still been.
The fact that I didn't get called was fine, but we should have at least had direct contact from entity to entity to formalize conversation. Oh, I mean, I could go on and on.
Right.
Well, maybe you could tell them Thursday.
Pardon?
Maybe you could tell them Thursday.
Oh, I'll, I'll be there. Even though it's 5:30 PM.
You'd rather be 5:30 AM?
I like 5:30 AM. Pretty wide awake at 5:30 AM.
All right, any more actual discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, supervisor comments? Do you have any quick comments?
Don't forget me, oh, they're gone already, I was wanting to make sure those SRO officers waved at me, that's the biggest deal in my family, so, congratulations that we have another SRO officer, it's a big deal, I, I take my grandkids to a school in the morning, so you get that feel, you know, of being in line and, and all the coming and going, and the protection, and the feeling of protection, seeing those SRO officers here and there and everywhere, is a big deal, so, like Marshal Donald said, it is a big deal. So thanks to the school for being good partners.
All right, Jimmy?
Thank, thank you, Mike. I want to bring to your attention some action that one of our officers did Thursday evening. I'm reading from an email we got from Sergeant Molden from Monroe County Sheriff's Office. On November 11th, 2023, Deputy Orlop and Deputy Hahn were just dispatched to 1400 North Lorch Road tonight for a medical emergency of 84-year-old Joey Byers who collapsed on the floor of his home. Levi Parrish, our officer, was closer to, in the Monroe County units and responded to the call as well, arriving before anyone else. He assessed the scene properly, utilized AED and to deliver shock to the patient, and rendered care for IU, till IU health lifeline arrived to take over the additional life-saving measures. They were able to gain pulse and transport Mr. Byers to the hospital. Officer Parrish may have very well saved Mr. Byers' life, father, son, grandfather, you know, it goes on and on. On behalf of Monroe County Sheriff's Office, I'd like to take this time to thank your department for assisting us with this call, and ironically, you know, we have our, our fireman, fire chief and assistant chief are here, and this is a, they do this all the time, this, this is something they do continually, and ironically, Levi was one of their officers at one time, so he was well-trained in this, this area, and was able to do that for us on, on Thursday night, so we really appreciate him, he's a young, aggressive officer, and he's really done a good job for us, so, thank you.
I wanted to say, following that, that Officer Newcomer secured a grant for the unit's AEDs.
AEDs.
AEDs, and he is going to put one in here, in the meeting room, and all of the employees here are going to be trained by the fire department on January the 20th to how to do, operate the AED and to do whatever it's.
Gotcha.
And then we're also going to have a class on stop the bleed from the police department, so we're going to have some good first aid training here in town hall. Sorry, I stumbled over those words so poorly.
Jeff, do you have any? Kevin?
This afternoon, obviously, you know, we've not had any rain for quite a period of time, so the fire chiefs in Monroe County, along with emergency management, have established a burn ban for Monroe County, starting today through the 20th. Obviously, if we get some rain, that'll change, but we'll keep it, keep any changes to that updated with the webpage, as well as our Facebook page, and so, no burning.
Thank you. Kip?
Well, I don't, if any of the residents on the western part of the, of the town, the Starnes Road is getting resurfaced, it's a conjunction with us and Monroe County Highway, they're doing most of the work, we went out and did some of the right-of-way repairs and stuff on Starnes Road, stretched from Flatwoods to about the end of the property of Kihei, that section of Starnes is actually in the town limits, so that's going on right now, within the next two or three days of doing some patching and leveling, and then we'll do a complete resurfacing of Starnes Road in that area. Also, as everybody knows, we're well into leaf season, so everybody be patient with us, we're just trying to stay up with them, like they all held on to the last minute and they all fell at once, so everybody's got their leaves out, so we're out there working every day to get them leaves picked up.
Thank you. Denise?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Sandy?
Well, I would like to introduce the newest person to the Ellisville Clerk Treasurer's Office. Kim, would you mind to stand? This is Kim Patton, and, and she was our choice for the new deputy clerk's position, so she's learning to do payroll, and I'll be working with her for the next seven, six or seven weeks, and then she'll be Noel's first deputy.
I want to congratulate Noel, as clerk treasurer-elect. What's that? All right, privilege of the floor, any public comment for anything that wasn't on the agenda, or anything that might get off your chest? Seeing none, council comments? Seeing none, call this meeting adjourned.